All right. Welcome, everyone. And Chaplain Jack Taylor was going to have our invocation this evening, but I do not see Jack in the room. And so we will stand and for, not only for the Pledge of Allegiance, but we will just start our meeting with a time of silent prayer or meditation. And I'll close it, and then we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance. Just pray. Men. Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Be seated. I don't have any particular announcements, except that if you hadn't heard Appalachian State beat Texas A&amp;M on Saturday, you have plenty of App State people around, so that's never a loser of an announcement. So we got you well done. We have an ethic statement. You can see it on the agenda. If you have one in front of you, and it reads in accordance with the Code of Ethics adopted by the council, all council members have a duty to conduct the affairs of the governing board in an open and public manner, free of conflicts of interest. If there is any item on the agenda, the outcome of which will have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact for any council member, his or her family or close business associates, then the council member should disclose that and let it be known during the meeting. If they're being known, all board members have a duty and obligation to vote on all matters brought into the council this evening. So thank you for that. I have a proclamation to read. International Day of Peace. Whereas the ideal of peace embraces the deepest hopes of all people and remains humanity's guiding inspiration, whereas beginning in 2002, the United Nations has designated September 21st of each year as the International Day of Peace with one complete day of ceasefire around the globe, and whereas the United Nations dedicates the International Day of Peace to nonviolence and the cessation of hostilities, and calls upon all nations and people to commemorate the day through educational efforts, public awareness, and adherence to the global ceasefire. And whereas, Peace Day activities around the world include peace marches, concerts, events, poetry readings, prayer ceremonies, art exhibits, vaccination campaigns, memorial services, school assemblies, family reunions, and sporting events, all made possible by the laying down of arms. And whereas the town of Black Mountain, North Carolina, has asserted itself by declaring itself as an international peace zone, and whereas Black Mountain Town Leaders call upon the people of Black Mountain to observe this day in our community as we stop out, step out to imagine, build, cultivate, and expect, and celebrate peace on earth. Now therefore, I, Larry V. Harris, Mayor of Black Mountain, North Carolina, who hereby proclaim September 21st, 2022, as International Day of Peace, proclaim this the 12th day of September 2022. So thank you. And thank you, Phil, for bringing this to our attention. We appreciate you. And with that, we have citizen comments. And first of all, Teresa Fuller. And when you come, you have three minutes. Teresa, are you here?
Yes, I am.
Okay. You have three minutes. If you'll provide name and address, and then you have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Teresa Fuller. I live at 207 Rodeo Denderon, and I have been a resident and business owner in Black Mountain since 2015. First, I'd like to thank you for your service. It must be difficult to balance the ever-growing needs of Black Mountain. This evening, I'm here to discuss our park system, particularly Lake Tomahawk. It has been a little over two years since I, Friends of Lake Tomahawk, have expressed the concerns about the state, the status of the lake. The park was created 100 years ago by the Roosevelt CWA Projects, and it continues to need your attention. I am concerned on how much concentration is being spent on new and nothing on our current park systems. I do realize maintenance is not fun. It's not glamorous. It has to be budgeted, and it has to be put into a project plan, and the work needs to be done. As I only have three minutes, I'll try to summarize what I have already sent all of the town council and the mayor to know what my concerns are in detail. So I'm going to go through these very quickly. The island erosion has dramatically increased in the past three years. Trees are dying. Three trees have died in the last six months. I have asked if the golf course is using new chemicals, or is there a building occurring upstream that's contaminating the lake? It's very much a concern. In 2019 and 2022, we measured the lake depth, my husband and I, very rough, you know, by rope, et cetera. We found that the deepest at that point was eight feet. Now the deepest is 7.5, and a lot of the places are, have been filled in by a foot to three feet in the past three years. Now, that's not a formal thing. It's up to you to do the formalization, but that's what we have found. There's so much sediment. You always see that the lake has been drained in the last two days. All you have to do is take a walk around there and look. It's poor. It's very bad. There's so many points that are coming into the lake that's not being clean water, and it's a lot of salt that's just building up into the lake. If this continues 10 years, you won't have one. It's just, that's what it is. I know that we've talked about dredging for several years, but it's never been appropriately done. Frequently, our lake is overpopulated by geese, which is causing environmental issues and chasing other birds away. In June of last year and this year, there were 60 geese residing on the lake. There were 20 goslings each year. And adult geese can eat four pounds of grass and forage, and poops two pounds per day. Can you imagine 60 geese around that lake? It's pretty, it gets pretty trashy in June, July, and August. What happened to the old sign showing them up around the loop? It was very quaint. It was done by a woman that was done here in Black Mountain. And you'll notice the one that's in the, at the expressway entrance. Beautiful sign. I don't know what happened to it. Jim and I were like, oh, if somebody would have given it to us, we would have done something. We would have painted it. We would have put epoxy on it and made it last another 10 years. It's gone, and now we have this metal sign that's leaning. And it doesn't make any sense. We are losing our quaintness.
I'm sorry, your time's up.
Okay.
But if you'll submit your written, I think we can put the entire written in the minutes of this meeting.
Okay. That sounds wonderful. I will provide you with the summary and the detail.
Good comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bill Vasessi.
I'm Phil Vasessi, live at Ivy Drive, number 15. Regarding the International Day of Peace, I'd like two things added to the proclamation. Namely, in 2016, we proclaimed in response to Pope John Paul, I believe, war no more. Meaning, we as citizens of Black Mountain pledge to spend money on peaceful means rather than on weapons of mass destruction. Second, this year, the spirit of the International Day of Peace, as Bishop Woods points out, is that racism is not peaceful. So I'd like that put in the proclamation, that racism is not peaceful. With those two things added to the proclamation, I will form every pastor about ringing the church bells at noon. I'd like the proclamation to be read at Town Square at noon. Do you think that can be done?
This is not an exchange. You can talk to the town manager after the meeting. After the meeting, you can talk to the town manager.
Okay.
Yeah. Thanks. Thank you, Bill. Jean Franklin.
What if it's possible for me to swap places? I wanted to follow Suzanne Sutherland, and she's also signed up.
Well, sure.
Okay. Could you call Suzanne?
I will. Suzanne Sutherland. Sounds like somebody's teaming up.
I have Lardus Smith, too, and Town Council. Do you want copies for you guys? Or should I just read them?
Well, if you've got copies, you can hand them out. I think you can probably just, yeah.
I mean, we're not. If you give them to me, I'll pass them over.
There you go. Thank you.
I just need one because I just have more.
You've got three minutes.
Suzanne Sutherland, 217 Ballyridge Lane, Black Mountain, North Carolina. This is a letter of recommendation to the Black Mountain Town Council of September 12, 2022. As residents of Givens Highland Farms and citizens of Black Mountain, we strongly urge the council to prioritize efforts to address the climate crisis. We commend the passage of your resolution in support of prioritizing the purchase of electric vehicles, but there is much more to be done. Given the urgent timeline set by the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change, IPPC, and North Carolina's Executive Order 80, it is necessary to do everything possible at all levels of government to reduce emissions quickly, with the goal of reducing emissions by as much as 50% by 2030. We recognize your concern over budgetary constraints, and we realize that the leadership of small towns such as ours is limited in what you can do. However, with the passage in August of the first major legislation in our country's history to address climate change, there is now greater opportunity to move forward local initiatives. H.R. 5376 Inflation Reduction Act 2022 became law on August 16, 2022. This legislation offers tax credits for clean electricity projects and electric vehicle purchases. We urge Black Mountain to take advantage of this, thereby saving energy and reducing the town's energy costs, while also helping the state meet its emissions reduction goals. From what we understand, three main focus areas that municipalities can implement are: Build or update new and existing buildings with energy-efficient retrofits and renewable energy sources. Purchase, replace all new existing vehicles, police, fire, buses, maintenance with electric vehicles. Update infrastructure with energy-efficient and/or renewable options, charging stations, street lighting, et cetera. So far, 10 cities in North Carolina have adopted and published climate action plans, including Asheville, that address the above three focus areas. We believe that these plans could be helpful in composing our own plan here in Black Mountain. We must all be good stewards of the earth, leaving it better than how we found it. Those towns that act swiftly will save the most money, while securing the confidence of their constituents, and most importantly, helping to improve the quality of life for us and future generations. We strongly urge Black Mountain Town Council to move forward with adopting and enacting a climate action plan as soon as possible. Submitted respectfully, Givens Highland Farms residents and members of the GHF Sustainability Committee.
Thank you, Suzanne. Jean.
I'm here to support what Suzanne just read out to you. I'm a nine-year member of the Earth Care Team at Black Mountain Presbyterian Church, and we have been working on issues like this as individuals in our homes and at the church. Today, this letter was read out to us in entirety, and the Earth Care Team unanimously, that was 10 people, voted to support it. And we wanted to just appear here to tell you that we think that these ideas that they are suggesting, they read out three areas the town could work on, are good ones, and Black Mountain is really overdue to get started on this urgent problem. I will throw out two more ideas. One is Asheville is already working on a plan to ban plastic bags, single-use plastics, Styrofoam and plastic bags. And another thing Black Mountain should think about is immigration, because something is going to tip, and it could be in the next 10 years. It could be, we just don't know when. Phoenix may run low enough on water that people are going to be looking around for other places to live. Miami may be hit with a hurricane, or we might even have rapid ice melt that will start water flooding into Miami more quickly than it has been. Something's going to happen, and people are going to look at this area. We are, fortunately, in one of the best places to be in climate change, but don't think we're going to be left here alone. You know, our town will double someday in size. People, rich immigrants and also poor immigrants, will be looking at this area. I'm just saying, having a climate plan is a good idea, and not to be taken by surprise when things start to change. And I thank you very much for your time and for your public service.
Thank you, Jean. David Carter Florence.
I live at 55 Wing Spread, Black Mountain, and associate pastor at Black Mountain Presbyterian Church. And we're working on this climate activity and urge you to work on a plan, a climate action plan. Thank you for your service.
Thank you, David. I believe that is all of our, all the folks who have signed up.
Actually, I signed on there. We tried to get you before Jean and Steffi Brown.
No, it's on there. Her name's on there.
Oh, I see. Double-doubled on us. Yep.
Steffi.
I am not a constituent, but I used to live here for 15 years, and my mom still lives here, so.
Just bring me your current address. That's still.
Okay. 361 Dix Creek, number 2 Road in Lester. And I moved because my road became a river after several years, and almost started to flood my home. So I've seen firsthand what climate does, and I actually moved here to Asheville from Montana after experiencing extreme fire and drought, where farmers were fighting for water rights, and a fire almost burnt down our log home. So if there's anyone that understands climate, it's me. I've experienced it firsthand. And I just, I'm trying to empower more people to speak up on climate. I think it is not addressed enough. There are 10 cities in the state of North Carolina that have a municipal climate action plan. Asheville's the only one in western North Carolina. I would like to see more outside of Asheville that actually take this on. Buncombe County has a plan. It's a couple of years old now, but with the Inflation Reduction Act being passed, which will help lower the cost of renewables, I feel like this is the time when there's no more excuses. I think that it's time for cities to take more action and to spend their budgets in that way, and eventually save money if you were to move quickly. I did bring some handouts that I can give you that are printed from the White House about the benefits of the IRA. And then I work at Green Belt Alliance and with the Blue Horizons Project, which actually is like a compromise, I think, between Duke Energy and the city and the county in order to help reduce our emissions countywide. And we do a lot of tapling events, and I put together these handouts. And one of them is, you know, what the subsidies are, so that people understand what they are and what they can get, 50 to 100% off of electric stoves, or basic weatherization, or upgrading their electric panels. But lots of electric vehicle things that there are some issues there, but hopefully they'll be worked out. So these are things that y'all can embrace. And after talking to the Blue Horizons Project, they did say that they believe it'll make it easier for municipalities to get the tax credits, but if not, you can actually ask certain solar providers if they know of a leasing company to help you get those tax credits. So the leasing company would actually purchase them, finance the effort, like a rent-to-own kind of deal, where they would get the tax credit, you would get the reduced cost, and then you would pay them a lease. They would be the leasing company, and you would eventually own the solar system. So that, you can make this happen regardless of whether it actually can come direct to you or not. So we're not quite sure if it will or not. The other thing is that you can also work off of Black Mountain's.
Staff your time's up.
Yeah.
Thank you. If you give your material to the town clerk, it'll get it in the minutes. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have our annual streets and parks report. Jamie.
Good evening, everybody. So this is our Public Works Parks and Sanitation Report for 2021. I'll let Savannah get everything up here. And so I sort of done this a little different because 2021 was a, was a different year based on, you know, staffing shortages, supply chain shortages, and basically the pandemic of COVID. So on our capital, our biggest thing for last year was paving, which, you know, we had, we had $500,000 approved, which got us 13 roads paved last year. Paget Town was half-paved, and, and we had it on this year, you know, to get budgeted to see about the other half, but we wanted to hold off until Paget Town subdivision was pretty much complete. And then, so this is a list of roads we got done, the 13 of them, and then Allen Mountain Drive, Fire Way, we got done up to Allen Mountain Drive. Speaking of supply chains, the new F-150 we just got maybe three weeks ago, and we had been waiting on it for over a year. It sat on a train car in Kansas for that long, waiting to see if there was a chip available to, to get it here. The truck was built, but it wouldn't run without the chip. And then the grant for the dump trucks, I think, correct me, Josh, if I ain't wrong, but that's about three years old now. And I had originally spec'd two international dump trucks. They kept saying they was on the build chart, and then three years later, they said they'd been kicked out. So had to respec new dump trucks and got with Kenworth. They pretty much assured me they could build them and have one in December and one in February. So the grant kept extending, and Savannah keeps submitting the paperwork for the extension. So I think we're good to still get those trucks, but it's been three years we've been waiting.
It's a VW settlement.
Vehicle lift, that was another thing that, that we budgeted for that's been installed that's really helped us save a lot of money because we can do a lot of maintenance in-house now as far as the stuff we're capable of, you know, brake, brake jobs, oil changes, general maintenance type items. And as far as maintenance, I put general maintenance up. I'm not going to spend a whole lot of time on that because it's sort of repetitive, year after year after year. It ranges everything from janitorial to carpentry to asphalt to landscaping. You name it, we do a little bit of everything. We've done our annual hemlock inoculation. We've done 340 trees this year out of the 826 we have total, which is on a three-year rotation. And then the stormwater last year was something new, of course, because we implemented what we call an I-Work system, which is a recording system that we do now, where if we go out and clean ditches or culverts, it's a, it's a very detailed information system that we had to come into the evenings and put on the computer, which in turn helps Anne Phillips with the stormwater permitting. It all goes together, so there's a lot of moving parts to it. But we have to record, you know, where, what, the, the ditches we do, how much tonnage comes out of it, how many man-hours, the equipment used, the equipment hours. It's, it's very detailed and a lot of information. So that's pretty much become a daily, if not several time a week thing now that we started in '21. We also put in a French drain system on South Park Lane where the condos was taking on a lot of water from, from some construction. It was going on up there, which, there's a lot of springs up there, but we, we put that in, got that under control, got the water going where it needs to go, which is also part of the stuff that we record in the system. So the stormwater was basically the biggest deal last year that, that we implemented and worked on to try to get our permit and done. Snow removal, we got lucky. We had one, only one snow that we had to call in, the outside contractors to do, the high country, which I signed another two-year contract this year with them. The rates didn't go up that much, thank goodness. They did go up a little bit just due to supplies, of course, but we got them for another two years. So I hope I don't hurt a lot of feelings here, but I'm not really pulling for a lot of snow, but, but there's always that chance. So we had one snow where we required dam. And speaking of shortages, we done some, we done a job fair at AB Tech because we were seven people down due to job shortages and, or staffing shortages. And so we set up over there all day with a job fair with other people, and as far as I know, no, no one from that fair applied or showed up. So they've been, we've done a lot of reaching out, trying to get help as far as on Indeed and the website, and it's been a lot of people involved. I will say that we're only, I got another person coming in October, so we're only two people down in Public Works now and two people down in sanitation. But I'm having to pull employees from Public Works to sanitation, which puts me low in, in Public Works, of course. So I'm still having to do that, but it is looking better. I have hired three people here just very shortly, so, so that's good news. On the park side of things, once again, general maintenance, greenways, janitorial mowing, ball fields, community garden, a lot, a lot of stuff goes on in the general maintenance, but that's just what it is, just general maintenance. If you can think about it, we probably do it. Cragmont Park, we redone the parking lots over there, regraded them and everything at the beginning of last year. Veterans Park, we actually built and constructed a new parking lot at Veterans Park to, to be able to handle 100 more cars. So we took all the trees out over there. We done the grading. We done everything in-house, and then hauled in massive tons of gravel. So we got that built, and that really helped this year as far as parking. Cherry Street Restrooms, Beautification Committee come in. They worked with, with Jennifer and planning and the historic preservation people about painting. They repainted the restrooms. We went in and done a deep cleaning because I know a lot of people complain about in summertime that there's a smell comes from there, but a lot of that is, is those, those floors has the granite tile, and it has the, the concrete in between, and that stuff absorbs that stuff over years, over years. So hopefully going into this year, me and Josh Anderson's talked, and I'd love to budget to have those floors replaced with more of a solid, solid floor where it can't get into the granite or soak in, and it can be washed out. So that'll be on the budget for next year. Town Square, we got with Beautification Committee, and we done a lot of pruning up there and redone some of the rock work down the sidewalks and got a lot of that done and helped get the mulch out for them. So this is only the second time I've gave a sanitation report since sanitation started. It'll be two years next month will be how long sanitation's been operating. So just wanted to share some numbers with you that I hope you find interesting. I know it was interesting to me when you get to looking this up. But the trash tonnage that was collected for 2021 was 2,920.87 tons that come out of Black Mountain. Recycle was 541.58 tons, which we do every other week. Yard waste, which is your brush and stuff like that, this, this is one that really impressed me, but didn't surprise me if, if you're taking the calls. We collected a total of 9,192 stops, and that's an average of 766 requests monthly and 192 weekly. Now, that's an average. I have seen it as much as 300 a week. And then bulk and white goods, same thing. We collected a total of 1,634 stops, which is an average of 137 requests monthly and 35 weekly. Now, if you go back and put into the fact that that's primarily been with five people, that's pretty impressive. But I say five sanitation people. I've had to sort of rob Peter to pay Paul drawing from Public Works. But anyway, I wanted to share those numbers. We, I know, I know they were very interesting to me. We end up changing tires on those rear loaded trucks about every six months, which cost about $4,500 per truck. So that's, but they're on the road every day, 20, you know, 10 hours a day, pretty much. So that's to be expected. Total work orders for '21 actually went up. I think a lot of that was due to doing a lot of inside work to a lot of public, public grounds and buildings. And to be honest, it's probably about 75 work orders short due to some restroom stuff that we had done. It didn't get recorded, but I thought I would just share that seeing how it was under and still above from the year before. I did not think it would be that high, but it, it come out as, as we done the totals, it, it come out. So we was up on our work orders. And then here's a good breakdown of where those work orders went to in, in the pie chart. And you'll see that town property took 1,579 of those and that, that ranges from painting to electrical work to floor work to carpentry work to, you name it, a lot of plumbing, anything that needed to be done on our town properties, whether it be carver or town hall, fireplace. And then, so there's a good breakdown of, of where those work orders went. And then here's even a more detailed view if you want to see them broke down even further into the system as far as total work orders go. And, you know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of miscellaneous stuff that goes in there because the way our work order system's set up, it's set up under codes and a lot of stuff we do, if it's not set up under that code, it just goes into miscellaneous. So there's a lot of miscellaneous stuff that goes in there that ranges just from all your oddball stuff, which could be anything. So that's it for 2021. We still had a busy year, even though we had staffing shortages, but things are looking up, I hope, as far as staffing shortages. And so hopefully the next six months, we give another one and we'll have a better update. But if you got any questions or anything, I'd be more than glad to, to answer them.
Let me ask, Bill.
How does the, the garbage collected the 2,900 tons? How does that relate or compare to the previous year, if you know?
I, I do not know that, but I can get you that information. It may be on my last report and I just.
Yeah, I can't remember. It seems like it was last year, but I don't remember what it was.
Yeah, they actually send us the bill which got the tonnage on it, you know, when we go into the landfills and stuff because they weigh the trucks each time.
If it's not readily available, maybe, and I think probably everybody on council would like us to just get it to Savannah.
Yeah.
She'll get it to us.
Okay. I'd be more than glad to do that.
Do we have that data from when Waysboro was, was running?
Uh.
Probably do because we paid the fee, tipping fees.
Ah, we could probably go back and look it up, I'm pretty sure and see.
Okay. I mean, that'd be curious the past few years.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, I can look that up.
You get, you should be getting it from the same place you got it. Is this a physical year? Is this July 1 to June 30th, 2021?
No, it's actually, I think these reports are from January to January.
A calendar year.
Yeah, calendar year. Yeah.
So about your, the stormwater work.
The I-Works.
Work orders and everything else. So if you had an increase in your work orders, is there, I guess, let me see if I can, what I'm trying to get at is allocating work that you're doing for a stormwater system and making sure we're able to keep track of that and allocate it and pay for it appropriately?
Yes. Yes.
So that's all sprinkled through there. You got some work orders, some of that, you know, if it's a culvert or if it's a drain or something.
Yes. And that, and it's got a place on that that you fill out for I-Works that's got a cost on it where you have to list all that information.
At some juncture, do some accounting work and it gets shifted. The point is the, it, the, the fees need to help pay for what could even be extra labor cost to, to get some of these things done and, and the additional cost of record keeping.
Right. And, you know, and speaking of cost, it's like everything, it depends on what it is. Most things I've seen have absolutely doubled, even culverts or water parts, but the $500,000 that got 13 roads paved, the ones I've bid it out so far, I got nine on there this year and it's fi, it's 600,000. So we got 13 paved for, now it could be different tonnages, you know, two lane versus single, whatever, but 13 roads last year at 500,000, nine roads this year at 600,000. So out of those nine roads, I'm going to have to figure out which one priority-wise to, to cut out. So we probably won't have, you know, maybe six or five roads when it's all said and done because last year when we done, we come in at 500,000, but we had to read, readjust three times because the cost of asphalt went up three times before they could even get it paved. So we had to readjust the quote three different times during that process.
Questions for Jamie?
Mr. Mayor, if I could, I did look, were able to look back and see that tonnage from last year, just short of 2,100 tons. So we're up 800 tons. And then recycling is 454 tons. I don't think we were 500.
So we're 454 to 541 on recycling, so that's went up. And then you said 21 and I'm at 2920 here. So it has went up some, yeah. But we got new, we know, we got more residents coming in and, you know, and things of that nature, so.
Well, that's one reason we budgeted a part-time position for solid waste reduction in this current budget that just started July 1. So my hope is that that will start to show up in these statistics every year when you're giving us the report at some point. We'll be able to really make an impact on the amount of solid waste that's going to the landfill.
And, and the good thing about it is it's very accurate numbers because the truck don't change in weight. So when they weigh the truck, they just subtract the tonnage from what was on it when it comes out. And then every month, they send us a bill with the tonnage on it and we just keep track of it.
That's 38% increase in one year in solid waste.
I'm sorry, we don't take questions at this point in time.
I noticed on the work orders, there are 700 and some for the restrooms. Is that a, is that cleanings?
It, it's everything. It's cleanings because they, they get cleaned every day, seven days a week.
Okay.
So there's a work order turned in each one of those days for that. So that contributes to a lot of that.
Gotcha.
Besides the general maintenance part of it.
Great. And then for the roads and streets, were we able to get through all of the kind of scheduled pavings that we were, that we had planned for this year or last year?
I'm sorry, Pete.
Were we able to get through, so you said you had 13 roads paved. Is that how, what we planned for?
Well, it, you know, I do that street assessment, which we're budgeting, you know, you'd mentioned it last year, Larry, about doing another one. So I'm actually trying to quote that out right now and I've got one quote and got another one on the way. But it really just depends a couple of factors. What kind of condition the road's in, the length of the road, which determine, you know, the yardage that's put down, and then if it's a two lane or a one lane. So if you go back and look, I, I, I don't want to scare you into saying we're not getting enough money. It may just be that there's more tonnage going to be put down this year than there was last year, even though it's showing more roads. But one of them, to give you a good example, one of the ones for this year's Vance Avenue, that's, that's two lane. It's a lot of tonnage and a lot of linear feet and so it's going to come in, you know, it was over 100, I think $150,000 just for that road. But it's in bad shape and a lot of people live on that road. And if we wait any longer, it's going to be, you know, 200, 250,000 next year if prices keep going up. So just trying to stay ahead of it.
Anyone else? Thank you, Jamie. Appreciate you.
Yep.
And your, and your crew too. Josh, I think we're ready for the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor and Council, you have item 5A with this, your consent agenda consists of three items tonight. 5A being adoption of minutes, that being August 8, 2022 regular session. Minutes, August 4, 2022 agenda minutes. August 4, 2022 special meeting minutes and August 4, 2022 closed session meeting minutes. Item 5B is a resolution to apply for grant funding for the fall 2022 stormwater and water infrastructure funding. The stormwater funding, it's got a new name. It's known as, and I wrote this down, now I'm not going to be able to find it. Well, I'm not even, I'm not even going to try that, but it's got to do with, it's a new pot of money. They put $82 million of ARPA funds in this pot of money this year for North Carolina alone for cities, towns and counties to go after for stormwater projects. So that's what we're doing here. The, we're going after $5 million in money for stormwater projects and then another about a million and a half for the water infrastructure funding. That's a separate pot of money, but that is the revolving fund money that the state puts out every year. That would be the Montree Road Water Line that we'd be looking at doing, that is in our, that is in our CIP and has been for a number of years. So this, the total for this funding is going to be around, probably around six and a half to seven million dollars is what we're going after. We are requesting from council that we use Withers and Ravenal to put together these applications for us. They, this is what they do day in and day out. We feel like we've got a pretty good chance of getting some of this funding by using them to help us with this grant funding and, and getting this submitted by the end of this month is when they're due. And then 5C is a resolution of support for the Metropolitan Planning Organization, French Broad River, application for safe streets for all action plan funding from the United States Department of Transportation. And that'll be your consent agenda.
Any, anyone on council have any questions about the consent agenda? Josh, you want to explain the cost of the?
For B?
Yeah.
Sure. So the, the applications, of course, we're, we're going to use Withers and Ravenal. They're not free. The total cost for those three applications is $10,000. Of course, they can't guarantee that we're going to get funded, but to speak with them and other folks that regularly use Withers on, on projects such as this, they are pretty successful.
All right. Any questions, council? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
So moves.
Thank you. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
And opposed, no. This is another opportunity for citizen comments. We have no unfinished business, so if anyone would like to make a comment on any item of new business, and if you have an agenda in front of you, if you do not, that would be a discussion, approval of the stormwater master plan, public parking space closure policy, selection of parks and rec master plan consultant, water policy updates, discussion of, of the future date and discussion of date and allocation, date to discuss and allocation of American Rescue Plan funds and a discussion of forming town councils, subcommittees. Any of those items, if anyone wants to make public comment now, would be the time to do so. All right. Hearing none, on with it, Josh.
So we have no unfinished business there. Eight business, excuse me, 8A, approval of the stormwater master plan. We have Mr. Jake McLean with us tonight. He is with Wildlands Engineering. They spent a number of months putting together this plan. It's in your packet. I'm sure you all had time to read over that over the past couple of days, but very extensive plan that's before you. So Jake, take it away.
Thanks for having me. Enjoyed working with the town, Jamie and some of the members of council and stakeholders that took part. Jessica and Ann. So this is essentially a new document. A lot of the old document was focused on some data collection on the infrastructure at the time and other, and is, was fairly dated information. This document focuses on the programmatic and aspects of the town's stormwater program and also project development. It's got a new mapping component that is a mapping application that will help Ann respond to citizen complaints and concerns as well as staff concerns and should even be useful for Public Works in looking at maintenance planning and also future project planning. On the programmatic level, we looked at level of service, which I've got a slide talking about what that means. Basically, what type of customer service the town is providing. Project prioritization ranking, which is information about how the town should go about evaluating future proposed projects and guidance on steps for developing projects. So as part of the master plan, there's also a lot of new project information, both information about existing identified projects from prior plans. There's a database, basically points on a map that show where all these projects are that have a brief description of those projects and, and that's all inside that mapping application that can be used to help move projects forward. So completed work under the project, we did office and field review of staff and citizen stormwater concerns. Those included both individual kind of isolated issues, but, and also repetitive challenges such as ditch networks. And a lot of the, you know, obviously there's a lot of repetition on some of this, some of the individual issues have things in common that we looked at. Wildland supported stakeholder advisory group outreach. We did a meeting and we did some web meetings to talk about what we were doing and get feedback on the various things that we're engaging in and, and to get some different viewpoints from business leaders, town council and some citizen participants in that stakeholder group. We did a data review of the town's stormwater data, the town's programmatic data. We combed through the I-Works database and all those work orders and what those look like with respect to stormwater management activities. We, like I said, we went through prior plans and looked at what projects have been implemented and those projects are denoted as such in that new database. So we have a database now that's, that shows a list of completed projects, including several of the kind of larger maintenance activities from I-Works. And it all, the, what completed also included developing a lot of new projects. So this was us looking at those issue areas and us looking at other areas around town where, you know, we did a lot of drainage network mapping and looking at where potential issues and opportunities would be. And so those things, a lot of them got mapped as new projects, some of them at a very basic level of this is what this project could be. It could be a stormwater retention area. And then some of them with a lot more detail where there was overlap of issues and opportunities that made sense to develop to a greater degree. So, and we developed some memoranda about project evaluation and level of service and I'm going to get into the level of service memoranda. Level of service is a common, a common way of looking at basically your customer service as it relates to different aspects of your program. In this case, the level of service aspects that we looked at for the town in making these recommendations were their, their required permit compliance and the related issue of natural resource protection. The, the aspect of the program that deals with management and performance of the system. So there's quite a lot under this, but some of the primary things that we did under this activity were to look at this, this town's mapping system, the quality of that data, the usefulness of that data for the various activities that town staff need to perform on a regular basis and also the usefulness of that data for future project development. Obviously, like that data can have a lot more detail with respect to elevations or things that would help evaluate the design of new systems or replacement systems. And at this time, not a lot of that information's available in the system. So, so we tried to identify those opportunities to improve management of the system and future performance by making recommendations about mapping and about condition assessment. There's very little condition assessment that's been done on the town's existing systems. And this type of information is important because when you're looking at future proposed projects and trying to rank them against each other, it's really important to know what kind of shape all that infrastructure is in. And if you don't know what shape it's in and you're planning a project in one part of the system, but another part of the system's failing, you know, you can be setting yourself up for, for, you know, putting a lot of effort over here and then having it fail over here. And so we identified those as important advances that need to be made with respect to stormwater management. to stormwater management, establishing stormwater design standards. So at this time, the town doesn't have design standards for when you're a developer, what you need to build your stormwater system to accommodate, and that's an important part of, you know, future system performance is to have that in place. We looked at, again, where those overlaps of performance condition and public health and safety all overlap. Those are like the priority projects that were looked at. And this third aspect of level of service is community service, which is, you know, a lot of Ann's job and Jessica's job of responding to these concerns and what are we going to do about these and how are we going to address these, and how are we going to track them so that we can make good decisions over time about how to better address these issues and how to appropriately categorize them and make progress on them. Flood mitigation activities were also identified in that document as a potential area of service expansion. So this is some of the mapping that we did. These are mostly citizen identified issues. Some of these are actually work order issues in green, and so these are various issues and complaints that happen within the system. And so we did a lot of looking at these to figure out where there is repetitive types of issues and also isolated issues of significance that might warrant a project or might warrant, you know, some type of maintenance tracking. We did mapping that looked at, this is kind of a funky looking map, not ever having looked at this type of thing, but it's a subdivision of all of the bigger watersheds in town into smaller ones because really when you're analyzing this problem, what matters is these smaller drainage catchments and how much water's draining to different points along the street networks and the drainage networks and how that's affecting the performance. So we did some mapping that is in this new system that will help the town look in a certain watershed and say, oh, well, we're at the bottom of this sub watershed, that's why we have so much water coming here, and look at the flow paths. And to start to, we've tried to put these pieces in place so that Ann can help, can track event magnitude and frequency with these issues. So, you know, we have a lot of complaints when we have huge storms, but that's not something that we can do a lot about from a stormwater management perspective. We can't put pipes in the ground that big. But what we can do is the repetitive issues that happen on a more frequent basis that are happening because the system is undersized and 75 years old or it's got some other type of condition issue. We can tie those issues to rainfall volumes, so how many inches, and then also duration, did it happen over 10 minutes or did it happen over two hours? And that helps answer questions about what can be done about this. We developed LiDAR mapping based off of 2017 QL1 LiDAR, which is really high quality, lets you evaluate where water's flowing on the landscape. That's the background, white and pink. We developed some coverages of the pipe system that help identify the size and material of the pipes for kind of rapid visualization. These are all the projects that are in this project database. They, as I mentioned before, they have various stages of development. Project write-ups were done for all these. This is a project evaluation table that was prepared. We used a color system because to some extent it's hard to evaluate all these projects with a minimum amount of data. It's a lot of qualitative evaluation. So we used a color system for a qualitative evaluation and look at all these things on the left-hand column, project effectiveness, community impacts, and so on. So there was a document written up about how to take an individual project and rank it with respect to these things and identify, you know, where there's challenges as part of the project and where there's opportunities. Red doesn't mean it's a bad project, it just means there's a challenge associated with it. It might be cost, conflicts with that infrastructure, or land ownership. As an example, these are some projects with their ranking with respect to these metrics, and then also their cost information and what, and some information about funding those over time through a bond. I mean, a lot of these projects are massive projects. Some of this report also focuses on how do you undertake this scale of project? What are the steps in the project development cycle? What are some ways of funding a series of projects? And so some of the spreadsheets we provided will allow the town to say, I want to do this project, this one, and this one. What does that mean for my total cost? What would that mean for my costs over a 10-year bond period? We developed some public outreach stuff, including this story map that I'm not going to open up tonight, but take any questions or any more addition to that?
Questions?
It's a lot of work. You did a lot of work. I just think it was a lot of work. And I'm told it's...
Yeah, it's pretty dense, but I mean, it's there as a reference document and...
Well, my hat's off. I mean, it's not a criticism at all. I was really impressed with the detail you provided, and I know that Ann and everybody put a lot of effort into it. And I appreciate the 380 folks that completed the survey, you know? That information is really helpful.
It is.
So, you know, kudos to you. I'm not sure how to approach questions on this. Just so the public knows, I think we need to say out loud that this wasn't just a fun thing we decided to do, that there were impetus from the government. For one thing, we were out of compliance, and we had to do something. And a lot of, I wish the folks from about the environment were still here because some of the things we do about caring for the environment kind of get embedded into big projects, and it doesn't get listed on the list so much. But making sure that the Swananoa River is healthy and no longer impaired is a big part of this whole project, aside from all the flooding issues and stuff. But I think that was a big issue that got this started because we were out of compliance. So I don't really have a question. I hope, I got this in the mail along with my new bill for the stormwater utility, and I thought the staff did a great job of bullet pointing some of the accomplishments for this past year that was used with that money because I know the public is like, what did you do with that money? Well, here's an example. Here's what happened with last year's money. And if you didn't get a copy, I hope we can get one to you because it's just, you can read this or you can read this. And sometimes this is, this kind of thing's super helpful.
Questions, anyone?
Just one. I noticed that within some of the mapping and some of the projects, it was kind of self-identified by people calling in issues of flooding within their private property or on the street. Is that the best way for, you know, if a citizen has an issue on their property from another neighbor from down the street flooding into their yard, is contacting the town kind of the best way to, you know, I guess, make that known so that that can become a higher priority to be addressed?
Jessica, you could...
The short answer is yes. We may not be able to do something on that person's private property. However, that information in the system's function and capacity, that can be useful information. Ann has also been wonderful about meeting folks on their property just for educational purposes and helping understand what they may be able to do to mitigate things. I will say the vast majority of folks who call in have an ephemeral stream on their property. They have one of these blue lines on that LiDAR map that is showing that this is a flow of water that is happening when we have rainfall. It's not a stream that runs all the time. And I thought I was going to introduce Jake, so I just want to say one thing, and that is, this plan is great. I'm really, really impressed with it. It is light years ahead in quality of the plan that we have had on the shelf, which was a heavy infrastructure plan and had a lot of redundancies, and this is actionable. We were not, we prioritized this plan in the first year of running that stormwater utility funding in order to inform long-term capital planning, staffing needs, programmatic needs, compliance with managing the system, developing standard operating procedures. So it is a wealth of information, and it's going to serve us well.
So it was my understanding of reviewing the plan that this plan is the foundational piece of how we're going to operate our utility, basically.
Well, our stormwater management plan, which is the manifestation of the actual stormwater permit, is the first piece because that has all the regulatory compliance.
Which one is that?
The NPDs permit has an approved stormwater management plan.
So that's the one that the government, if we were to be audited?
That's the one they come for.
And look at that?
That's right.
And so tell me how that ties to this.
So one little piece of that is that you take care of your stormwater system. And that is a very expensive and complicated one...
That's why I did this.
That's right. And so engaging in this, updating that, and understanding what data we need to be collecting and how we might go about collecting it will help us, you know, maintain our system and expand our system in the best manner possible.
That's why I was curious about the connection and how this fit into the structure that's built. But you had these pieces, you didn't have, this was redone. And then you can, you know, it's massive, but you know, you can still kind of get the gist of it. It's not, you know, boring covering all of your acronyms, you know, you might get through there pretty well. But it is important, I think, because I think the stormwater utility has not been very well understood by a lot of the public, that we're no different than any other municipality in Buckham County, do you have to do this.
That's right. And you will see Ann and I, our shining faces back here in October, breaking down a lot of the statistics from our first year as we kind of wrap up one year and go into your two.
Right, right. Anybody else? Good job. Thank you, Jake.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you. So this is before you cancel for approval, and if there are no additional questions or comments by any member, I'd entertain a motion to approve the stormwater master plan as presented.
Sub move.
Thanks. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. All right. Onto the parking space. And if everybody can get this off your stack and move it to the side. Parking space closing officer, Josh?
So as you'll recall, I think last month, we just, we kind of introduced this. We've been approached by a business owner about closing a parking, a public parking space in a public parking lot. First time I've ever been asked that question about closing a parking space. So Ron and I talked about this some, and Ron did most of it, put some information together. We've got a policy in front of you. I would say that the very last sentence at the bottom, the Town of Black Mountain will be committed to, we're missing a "to," T-O, that should be added in there. I'm happy to read, go through this and read it out if you'd like me to, but essentially this kind of puts, lays down some criteria for when...
Josh, it's not that long. Just go ahead and read your bullet points.
Sure.
That'd be fine.
Okay, so the bullet points, as we look at the potential for closing a parking space, we would be looking at these specific bullet points. Space leads to, and if closed, provides access to a pedestrian or vehicular travelway. The pedestrian travelway does not connect to a sidewalk. The vehicular travelway does not have access, excuse me, does not have another access point for vehicles, or the creation of a new access point by closing the parking space will create a safer access point for vehicles. Pedestrian or vehicular travelway is the only legal access to properties, or the pedestrian or vehicular way is the most practical or safest access to properties or amenities. Closing of the parking space will not create a hazardous condition. Once the parking space is closed, nothing shall be placed in that space as it is intended to provide unobstructed access to the pedestrian or vehicular travelway. Parking space closings pursuant to this policy are to be used for no purpose other than those set out. And then lastly, the Town of Black Mountain reserves the right to reopen the parking space at any time, should it be in the best interest of the town or the public.
Any questions for Josh on that?
If a parking space meets all these criteria, it is up to the town staff to make the judgment call.
That's how this sets it out. Yes, sir.
So in this one, the parking space in question, this particular request that came in, should the board pass this policy that gives you a way to take care of it?
That is correct.
You intend to just stripe it off and show it as a no parking space?
That's correct.
Any questions, comments? Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion to approve the policy as presented.
Sub move.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. And Parks and Rec Master Plan Consultant, Josh?
Mr. Henderson, will you come up? Well, I don't know that you even need to. It's probably quicker for me to do it. It's just as simple. We, this is something that was in our budget this year. We talked heavily about doing a Parks and Rec Master Plan update. We have that in this packet. We've, I think we had five consultants that put in for the Parks and Rec Master Plan update. We ended up going with McGill and Associates due to their familiarity with the area as well as their experience in doing these types of plans all across the state. We would ask that council and mayor select, or, excuse me, confirm our recommendation of McGill and Associates for the Parks and Rec Master Plan project.
Thank you. Questions for Josh?
Do this have a similar process with public input?
Very much so. It will be very, very public input heavy to make sure we get everything and everybody's voice about what they want to see, where they want to see it. Yes, ma'am.
And do they have a timeline that they would suggest?
You know, I'm going to, I'm going to say they're probably going to start after we give them this notice to proceed tomorrow. They're going to get everything together. I would say they would probably be done close to the end of the calendar year will be my hope.
That's what we hope.
Yes.
Any other questions? Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion to approve the acceptance of McGill and Associates to complete the comprehensive recreation master plan. This is an update?
This is an update. That's correct.
Master plan update.
Sub move.
Thank you. Any other discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. Water policy updates.
So this is, yeah, this is for discussion for this evening. I did provide you with some examples from other locations in the general vicinity, but I think from a staff standpoint, we would like, and you don't have this in here, I will bring it back next month if council gives us that direction, but we would like to have the ability as staff to do, you know, to be a little more flexible in some of the fees that come through, whether it be a late fee or reconnect fee, whatever that may be, due to whatever circumstance that, you know, that we feel like is extenuating, whether that be, you know, sickness, death, whatever it may be. But bring something back to y'all next month that has the language in there for that purpose. But I also have asked Laurel, I'm looking for her. I'm right over you. Where are you? I have Laurel here who has been our water customer service specialist for a number of years. She's actually moved on to a different position now, but I would like for her, if you don't mind, just take about two or three minutes just to kind of tell y'all, we send the bills out and then what happens next, just so you'll have an idea of kind of how we deal with those, with those issues. Thank you, Laurel. So I guess just take us from, your bill goes out today, what happens next?
Okay. So our water bills go out on the first of each month. You can get those by paper bill or an emailed statement, which we're working on a few kinks there. They are due by the 20th of each month. Anything that we don't have that next business day in-house receives a late fee. Generally, that late fee is $10 or 5%, whichever is greater. That same business day, we also send out second notices to anyone that has a past due balance at that point. balance at that point. That notice says that they have 15 business days from the date of that notice to pay before they are subject for disconnection. So that pretty much means from the day we bill on the first, they have 35 days to pay before there's any sort of potential interruption. We try to take into account holidays, or we try not to do cutoffs on a Monday or a Friday. Mondays are usually pretty heavy mail days. We want to take respect for things that may have been mailed over the weekend, or if a holiday may alter that. We also don't like to do disconnections on Fridays because some people may not be home before we close for the day. We don't want to disconnect anything after hours where we don't have anything for them over the weekend. So that's kind of the progression of the billing and the dates that things are due or penalties may be applied.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions for Laurel? So, so you may not have this number in front of you, but how many, how many, or Josh may know, how many cutoffs have you had?
Monthly, 50-ish, 30 to 50?
Yeah, it's fluctuated a lot over the last few months.
That's, I mean, what is that number for 50?
30 to 50 folks are getting on the cutoff list that haven't paid in 35 days.
That actually might just get disconnection. That's out of roughly 4,000 customers.
Is there an average of 25 to 35 a month?
I would say it's probably closer to that.
I'd say that's pretty accurate.
Is there a lot of repetition?
Yes. Oh, we also have started, this is not in any sort of policy or requirement, forget how many months we've been doing it now, we did start doing kind of a robo-call. It's prompted a lot of people to update their phone numbers with us, which is good. But about three days prior to any disconnection, we have that potential list ready, and we try to reach out to all those people through automated call. With our new software that we're implementing, we hope to have the ability for that number to show up as our water number versus kind of an 800 number, so more people will hopefully pay attention to it. But we have implemented that as well to help reduce those numbers of cutoffs.
Do we have any resources that we share with people to get aid and support if needed?
We do. To, I guess vendors, I guess you could say, to organizations that we have customers utilize a lot is, Swanonah Valley Christian Ministries and also Evelyn. We've also tried since COVID and all these other state programs, I think there was NC Hope. There was also another program for low-income families through the state where Evelyn's our local contact, where they've been doing some pretty significant pledges. So we've tried anytime someone calls and says, hey, I can't pay, whether they've been disconnected or maybe getting close to that disconnection, we've tried to throw all those resources out there, and we've had quite a few people take advantage of it. So it's been good. Yeah.
Any other questions for Laurel? Thank you, Laurel. Appreciate your work.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Laurel.
So.
If council is okay, my plan will be to bring something back to you next month. We know we have that utility billing policy, could add some language to that about giving us the flexibility to do certain things where we wave those fees, wherever those circumstances may be, anything else that y'all would want to see.
I think, I would just add, if council might have something, if you do over the next few days or something, reach out to Josh if something comes to mind that you'd like, you know, for us to discuss when we take this up next month. But I think it would be good for us to have a regular reporting to council quarterly just on how we're doing, the numbers. If we're making exceptions, we don't want to identify individuals, of course, but, you know, reasons why, and just, you know, since we're providing some flexibility, which I do think is needed here, we probably need to have some good reporting system back to council and where the other, just so we can keep track of what's going on. Would you all agree with that? So how, you might put that in there.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, thank you, Josh, for bringing that to our attention. So these last two matters on our new business, discussion of future date regarding, future date discussion, discussing determined allocation of rescue plan act funds. This was put on the agenda at the request of Councilmember Hay. And so Doug, since you requested it, I'll let you kind of offer what you had in mind in bringing it up, getting it on the agenda.
Sure. I don't have too much in mind. I was just hoping that we could continue our conversations around the allocation of our funds. We did quite a bit of that in the budget discussions, but, you know, that has kind of stalled after that. So I'm just hoping that we can either take some time at a future regular scheduled meeting or probably preferably do a special call meeting to begin, you know, furthering those discussions.
Sounds good. So agreeable, agreeable to council to ask the town clerk to pull us all and see if we can find a date to meet and a special call meeting on this topic. Sound good?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Great, thank you. We'll just, if you'll take care of that Savannah, that'd be super. Then item F, discussion of forming town council subcommittees. Go right ahead, Doug.
This also came at my request, and this is a follow-up after, we had a series of infrastructure meetings, I guess it was earlier in the year, several months ago. And I've been speaking, speaking with Josh and speaking with other council members 101. It seemed as though maybe the best step forward to kind of furthering those discussions and making recommendations to the council and to the, to town staff would be to have these, you know, to form a subcommittee where we could have more focused conversations and then, and then present something for the community and the council to consider.
So in moving forward, would it just be a way to move forward on it to see if council wishes just to direct the town manager to kind of develop this thought and just, you know, the idea of subcommittees and bring it back to the board? And we can discuss, and then maybe I think it might be the idea for us to discuss it in public. And then the council may be ready to adopt it or not at that time, but then maybe adopt it, a little bit like the water policy. You know, we can kind of move it through a regular meeting, but if it's just something that moves through easily, then we'll handle it that way. If it takes two meetings, then we'll do it that way.
Sure. Yeah, that sounds good. I would just add that while, while infrastructure is on my mind, and that was kind of the impetus of this discussion, there may be other topics that come about. And if there was some sort of informal or formal policy around how we could, you know, go about forming subcommittees, that might be a good idea.
So these are short-term, like task forces almost?
That's right.
Not standing things?
Yes, that, that's how I envision it, I don't know.
I think that's fine. It could change.
I didn't, actually, I didn't understand it to be that way. If you're thinking more short, you'll have a project.
Yeah. And then present something to the council to consider.
Great, thank you. Thanks for that clarification, Doug, you asked that question. Good, so is that good for everybody? We'll just task the town manager with that. All right, great, thank you, Councilmember Hay, for bringing those items up. So we have a public hearing to amend the text for residential uses in the central business district, and I would entertain a motion from council that we open the public hearing.
Sub move.
Great. All those in favor?
Aye.
Go right ahead, Jessica.
So a couple of months back, you asked the planning board to take a look at removing residential uses from street level in the downtown district, following an Airbnb opening on Cherry Street. But we also, the planning board discussed, and the manager and I discussed, single-family and two-family structures in the district as a whole, after the Tressle Building, Ice House, whatever it's called this week, had a rezoning application and turned residential with the intention of being a short-term rental, taking it off the market to be a restaurant or venue as it was originally intended to be. This went through planning board without any issue initially and had unanimous vote to recommend such change. Good conversation. At our last planning board meeting, we had one member who expressed some concerns about nonconformities created to single-family and two-family structures. This was made as a comment at the end of the meeting, there was no vote, there was no consensus, and the information provided was pretty skewed, certainly unintentionally. Boundaries and understanding where things lie on the ground can be kind of difficult. But the thought at the time from the member was that there were 50, potentially up to 50 houses impacted, which is not accurate, it's more about 10. Most of those are on Ridgeway, there's one or two down on Vance. And I want to talk about nonconformities for just a second, if that's okay. Nonconformities are expected and typical of any change in your development regulations. They are all over town, and they exist in manner of lot sizes, uses, setbacks, maybe half the permits I looked at before we hired a new planner had nonconformity of some kind or another. When we talk about nonconformities, they are a protected legal use of a property. The deal is, you just can't make it more nonconforming. It can be nonconforming as long as you want it to be, and it is up to the property owner for such change to happen. So if you have a one- or two-family residence or street-level residential, as it is right now, it will remain such, until such time that person decides to make that change. That is the right, and it is not our place or legal for us to impede on that, nor is it our interest. So we have nonconformities regularly. I think you have a little map that, okay, this is leftover from an old meeting, but I thought it might help illustrate the point. And I think there's case law citations on the back if you're feeling like you want to read something else. This was for a different meeting, but I color-coded different types of nonconformity in a couple of blocks near the lake. And you see that many houses are nonconforming in their location, or the lots not conforming, it's too small, or the setbacks where it is aren't quite right. When you think about when Black Mountain was laid out, when all these streets were planted, all these parcels were created initially, and then zoning came aboard many years later, and changes over time, this is a typical expectation. Somebody suggested, might we rezone those properties? We cannot rezone those properties because that would be a downzone, because right now those properties enjoy quite a bit of latitude in their development regulations, and 160D prohibits us from downzoning them. If they felt compelled to seek a rezoning on their own, that is absolutely the right to do so, and they are on a perimeter, and so that they would have adjacent zonings to consider. I'll also just footnote that we are working on a UDO, which will create a whole lot of nonconformities in one way or another, in little bits and pieces, whether it be tweaks to use or definitions, and that is just part of the process.
Great. Any questions for Jessica? Oh, I guess, hold on a second, I guess I need to ask for public comment here. So you're done?
Yep.
You're all complete? Is there any member of the public who would like to make a comment? Great. Hearing none, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, thanks.
So I'm gonna admit that when this came up before and I was talking about the central business district, I was thinking Broadway and West, you know, parts where you walk and there's little shops. It never occurred to me, and this is my bad, I'm sorry, I was not aware, that Vance and Ridgway would be part of that. And so you've addressed it in this document, but I just want to say it out loud and get your feedback, that the folks that live, that have single-family or two-family homes on those streets will not be adversely affected by this ordinance, and that if they try to sell it, the new owner wouldn't be affected in terms of getting a loan or mortgage, or just what would the long-term implications be for owners?
I don't work at a bank. It is possible that they may have to say that they have something that is nonconforming, but that would not be a special condition to these folks. There are so many types of nonconformity. If that question is asked, many people in Black Mountain would have to answer in the affirmative. I don't think, because the use is not threatened, and it exists until such time that person decides to change it, I think that their individual rights are quite protected.
So do, do someone, what purchases, one of the nonconforming homes that has a home on the street level, and they step into the shoes of the seller as far as they can continue that? They may not be able to embellish on it in a significant way or something, but they can, they can move forward.
Sure. The difference would be that if you bought a house on Ridgway today, and you said this would be a great flower shop, and you applied for a zoning application, and six months, you've got to change your mind and go back to single-family, but six months and a day you change your mind, it's going to stay commercial.
Now, if someone were to have a home business, you know, and meet home psychiatrist or something like that, and met clients in there, would that be?
That's under different ordinance and under home occupations.
Okay. And it would not impact any sort of, like, any sort of development or project that they were wanting to expand their residence?
As long as they meet the requirements of the home occupation ordinance, they would be fine. That relates primarily that it is not the principal use of the structure, and that it is, you know, obviously secondary. You have a home office, that's fine. You've got the other practitioners, and 75% of your square footage is devoted to your practice, that's not going to be okay.
Right. And then you said until, until they choose no longer to make it a residence, it can remain to stay as residence?
Absolutely.
Like, what do you, what exactly do you mean by no longer? Like, okay, so for example, if it were not being, if no one was living in there? If it was, if someone died and a state took over and it was, you know, essentially vacant for a year?
It's still in that use. We have things, if they were going through a probate process or something, that use would still be maintained.
Okay. So it's actually, okay.
Anyone else?
I do. So what is the, and I had this question originally, and I still have it, what is the hurry on making this decision instead of waiting through the UDO process to look at it comprehensively?
That's a bit of a loaded question.
That's what?
A bit of a loaded question.
Okay.
The reality is that there are pressures on downtown from short-term rental developers, and they know that that is, that they're, they know that they can do that. So you sort of have a choice. You can create a very complex solution for a complex problem in a short period of time, or you can create a stopgap measure and use something a little less elegant, like just simply changing the table of permitted uses, in order to buy some time to develop a more precise solution for a more complicated problem.
So if council adopts this as part of the UDO, can they go back in and revise it again?
Absolutely.
And look at it in a different way, perhaps?
I would expect to see that, yes.
Will this even become part of the UDO? This is outside of the UDO?
This is now, the UDO is in process, we still have about another year through that. This helps us today, and until such time that is adopted. UDO will be adopted in its entirety because it is a comprehensive update, we can't do it by chapter, but it will be different, and you will have new uses, and their table will look very, very different than it does today.
This is, just as you said, this is really an interim measure that council directed it go to planning. Now, planning's done their work and sent it back to us, but it was really done in response to the public comment that meeting two months ago?
Mm-hmm.
And brought to our attention. And I'm not saying council didn't have an opinion on it and think it through, but that's instigated, it instigated the more rapid action, and I remember Councilmember Christie, I think voted against it, actually, didn't you?
I did.
Because of that. But are you satisfied with that a little bit more at this point? Councilmember Christie?
I might be. That still theoretically bothers me.
There are many, many complicated things that the UDO tackles. This is just one of them. This is just one of them. You can change, you have the right to make the changes whenever you want, as long as you go through the right process. So this is not any more binding than any other development regulation you've ever made. If it helps you to think of it as, you can certainly leave it this way in the future, or if you see a better, more elegant idea, you can take that up.
Right. And so, Councilmember Hay, you have something?
I was just, I was just going to say, because I had this question, I asked you earlier, if there were other municipalities in the area that had similar...
Yes.
Similar, and I think you said Boone, Brevard, Weaverville, Woodfin, among others.
Yeah, this is very typical. You might say, well, why is it like this now? And that's because this was not a development pressure on the district at the time, and when we have changes in conditions, we need to respond and change development concerns.
Questions, any additional questions or comments? Hearing none, is council wish to take action to adopt ordinance 0-22-07 as presented?
I move to adopt ordinance 0-22-07 as presented.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
No.
Thank you. So, it is adopted, and Mr. Snead, do you have anything for us?
I have nothing to do this one.
Good. That's just perfectly fine.
That's what I was like, you see, go ahead.
Perfectly fine. Town manager?
Two quick things. October, Saturday, October 1st, from 9:00 to 12:00, meet in the town square parking lot. We're going to do a litter sweep. Mutification committee is going to sponsor that.
What's the date on that?
Saturday, October the 1st, from 9:00 to 12:00. And then our Citizens Academy, this will be our third year, we're glad to bring this back after the pandemic, but that starts on September the 19th, which is a Monday at 5:30. And that's it.
Thank you. Council?
I would like to just read this briefly. Every year from September 15th to October 15th, Americans celebrate National Hispanic Heritage Month by appreciating the community's history, heritage, and contributions from the ancestors of American citizens who came from Mexico, Spain, the Caribbean, South and Central America. Hispanic Heritage Month originally started with one week of commemoration when it was first introduced by Congressman George E. Brown in June 1968. For the civil rights movement, the need to recognize the contributions of the Latin community gained traction in the '60s. Awareness of the multicultural groups living in the United States was also gradually growing. Two heavily Latinx and Hispanic-populated areas, the San Gabriel Valley and East Los Angeles, were represented by Brown. His aim was to recognize the integral role of these communities in American history. Observation of Hispanic Heritage Week started in 1968 under President Lyndon B. Johnson, and was later extended to a 30-day celebration by President Ronald Reagan. Starting on September 15th and ending on October 15th, it was enacted in law via approval of Public Law 100-402 on August 17th. September 15th is the starting day of the date for the month, and is important for many reasons. It is the independence anniversary for Latin American countries, El Salvador, Guatemala, Costa Rica, Nicaragua, and Honduras. From here onwards, the Independence Days of Mexico and Chile fall on September 16th and September 18th, respectively. Hispanic Americans have been integral to the prosperity of the United States. Their contributions to the nation are immeasurable, and they embody the best of American values, and forgiving my terrible Spanish, I'll just read that last part. Los hispanoamericanos han sido parte integral de la prosperidad de los Estados Unidos. Sus contribuciones a la nación son incumenciables y incarnan el mejo de los valores Estados Unidos.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Hay, anything?
Nope.
Councilmember Patilla?
No.
Vice Mayor Stone?
No.
Councilmembers?
Yes. Two things, I wanted to make sure the public knows that we're going to be working on enhancing the process for evaluating, our annual evaluation for the town manager. I feel like we can do better, that he, that any, whoever's the town manager deserves a really good process, and it's, I want it to, we all want it to be meaningful for the council and for the town manager. I think y'all know that the only person we supervise is the town manager, correct? So that's why...
That's it. That hip is out of there.
That's right.
So, any rate, I just wanted to put that out there.
Every time I do, I get a raise.
That happens in November, and of course, the evaluation will be in closed session privately, but we will put out the agenda for the process so that y'all have some idea of what we talk about in that process. The other thing is, I guess it was a little defensive about all the conversation about the environment earlier tonight, it was like, we are helping, we are trying, you know, so any rate, I just wanted y'all to know that I'm going to reach out to those folks, the ones at Givens, Highland Farms, and also Black Mountain Presbyterian, and try to meet with them and listen to their concerns, and maybe I can share some of the things that the town is already doing, that they may not be aware of, because sometimes it's hard to know. So, just wanted to, like, no doubt.
Thank you. The only thing I have to add is that Councilmember Patilla and I attended what was a delightful event, that's the Western North Carolina Veterans Home, about three Saturdays ago.
Three Saturdays.
And the occasion was the celebration of what they call their church. These people are, they're not going anywhere. And so, actually, Jack Stewart, who was on the agenda tonight to offer the invocation, is their pastor. And so, this afternoon event that we attended was basically like, if you can envision it, like a church homecoming lunch. It was a good meal, too, wasn't it? And it was delightful, walk around and visit, and Councilmember Patilla is more familiar with the facility than me, because his father-in-law was down there. But it was, it was, it was an impressive time, wasn't it?
It was. It was basically the establishment of a new church, is what it was. And it was an awesome experience, at least it was for me.
It was for me, too. I spoke to a lady who was, well, I spoke to her daughter, the lady was there, but I spoke to her daughter, who was 103, and had served as a nurse in the military for her career, and all over. Well, we spoke to, Archie and I spoke to, she was a nurse also.
She was a nurse.
And she'd served in the Navy Air Force, which, you know, that stopped being that in the '50s, so go figure, you know? So, we didn't get her age, but I suspect it was up there. It was delightful, and it's great work if you haven't been down there, it's worth just driving through and taking a look at it. It's a beautiful facility, beautiful place, it really is. Thank you, thanks everyone for being here. Council, I'd entertain a motion that we go into closed session to discuss acquisition of property as permitted by North Carolina General Statute 143-318.115.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. Good night.